The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, February 12, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorba, here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kirmey is excused. Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance, Susan Bondi, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next is Item C, Approval of Tonight's Agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
And Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, February 12, 2019.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Any comments or questions on the approval of the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Question on Wade Trim bills. I see on page 51, it's another $10,000, $10,500 for Wade Trim. Have we resolved what we owe Wade Trim or what they think we owe?
This is, this is the, we believe will be the last payment. I think you and I talked about this in the past, and this was the, their final bill was larger than that, and we cut it down to this final price.
Any other comments, questions on Item D? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor. Clerk? I move for the approval of the consent agenda for Tuesday, February 12, 2019.
Motion's been made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, before public comments and questions, we have tonight with us our new County Commissioner, Melissa Dobbs. And if Commissioner Dobbs could come forward here to the podium and just introduce yourself and tell us about some of the things that you're working on in Wayne County.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Supervisor Heisey and Board of Trustees. My name is Melissa Dobbs. I'm the newly-elected Wayne County Commissioner for District 10, which is Canton, Plymouth Township and City of Plymouth. And I'm just here tonight to introduce myself. And I am planning to be in attendance at these meetings on a regular basis. My contact information can be found online. If you Google Wayne County Commission, there is a section of commissioners, and you can look up my, I have a page there, and you can find my email and phone number. In addition, I am holding monthly coffee hours, so you can come and meet with me face-to-face. This month's coffee hour is February 28 at, and that's a Thursday evening, at 7:00 PM. And it's at the Canton Township Administration Building on Canton Center Road. And again, that's at 7:00 PM. And I think that's all I'm going to talk about tonight, so thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody have? And then you and I will set up a meeting at my office, just to go over some pending matters with the county.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next is Item E. This is Regular Public Comments and Questions, limited to three minutes. This is not your only opportunity during the night. We will have another Public Comment Question period at the end of the meeting as well. And we also encourage questions on individual agenda items, as long as they are relevant to that particular item at hand. So at this point, are there any public comments or questions? Okay. I'm going to move on to Item F1. This is the text amendment to Chapter 99 of the zoning code, Article 22, Cluster Housing Options. We had a study session on this last week, and I think as a result of that meeting and other discussions, public discussions that we have had, I would like to recommend that this matter be referred back to the Planning Commission for further review, in light of the items that were discussed at the various public meetings on this item. So I think what I would like to do is, I'm going to make, I'm going to move that we refer this item back to the Planning Commission for further review and research. Is that good enough?
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion, there's been a second. So Trustee Dempsey?
I don't oppose that at all. I have a question, though. That's a different motion from what's in here, as far as this said, referring the attached material. That was basically what we had received. So your, your motion is to refer the matter back for review and further, I'm sorry, I didn't really tune into it, review and action?
Okay. Well, there is a proposed motion here. So let me, I'll withdraw that motion. And I'll just, I'll read the one that's here.
Okay.
I should read this more often, right?
Okay.
So let me do that. I move to forward the attached material relative to a proposed text amendment to the Plymouth Township's, to the Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 99, Article 22, Single Family Cluster Housing, PC Application Number 2316, to the Planning Commission for further review. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorba.
So now I can have a comment on
Yes, sir.
this motion. So I don't oppose it. I think it's a good idea. The attached material is the, basically what we received. So I ask our liaison, perhaps, based on all the discussion at the study session, comments in writing, is that, do you think that's what the Planning Commission would do? Would look at all of that material and then make a further proposed action to the Board? Or what are you thinking?
I can't speak for others, but I think if it's remanded back to the Planning Commission, it may or may not be taken up. It doesn't necessarily have to be taken up.
But what's your sense? Is this something that, I mean, the density issue was the key issue that people were upset about?
For me, and I'll speak for myself. So as, you're right, it was, what was it, 2211? Section 11 is the big one with the, you know, the density bonus and all of that. If there's issues related to cleanup and modernization of this, as was indicated before by Laura, what happened to Laura? Oh, there she is. Then, you know, I think we could, you know, certainly look at that. But for me personally, I'm not in favor of that, that section that gave that, that density bonus and gave really almost unfettered discretion to either the Planning Commission or the Board of Trustees. We're not jamming 80 condos in that space, in other words.
Well, I would like to see the Planning Commission take a look at the PUD text amendment that was approved by this Board, as recommended by the Planning Commission last year, the year before, I can't remember.
Yeah.
But my recollection is there were improvements in that that we, nobody had any issue with. And those were approved, and some of those are in this proposed text amendment. So again, maybe there should be some more analysis of what happened with the density issue in the PUD ordinance changes. I don't recall.
I don't remember. I'd have to go look.
But why was there no concern there? Must have been more limited, and maybe Ms. Haw would know. But, so I would like to see it come back with these improvements. And if there is going to be a proposed density change, at least some analysis of why or how that intersects with the PUD ordinance amendments and so forth, so that it's a really comprehensive look. If there's no changes to the density provision, personally, I'm okay with that, too. But I think the other changes are, are good. They, they provide further specificity, and I would encourage the Planning Commission to relook at those. I know some members had specific concerns. Maybe those could be addressed, like the Treasurer had a question or two. So I would like to see it come back. Well thought out. And if 2211 is unchanged, certainly that might leave a lot of problems.
There are many positive elements to the, to the proposed changes that we should definitely consider or reconsider. I also think that, for a variety of reasons, the number one reason being that this is the, these types of cluster housing, single-family, active senior, 55 and over, empty nester type home, is the kind of housing product that we're going to keep seeing in the township. And I think that we need to acknowledge that and, and have a structure in place so that we can address these in the future. And there have been so many, as a result of the four public meetings that we've had on this issue, there have been some, some very good suggestions made in terms of a formula based on either acreage or zoning standards or something. But there are many good ideas out there that I think would, it may not, I don't think it ever would have satisfied this particular developer, but I think it would help to address these issues in the future because they're going to keep coming back. And, and we need to have some kind of policy in place.
Yeah. And I, I don't think that, you know, particularly, you know, when the, the public, there was a lot of public opposition, and I think that's great when people come out and, you know, and, and speak in that manner. I think that's a wonderful thing. The, in this particular case, I think, you know, the density was just so great that it, it threw people into tailspin, assuming that it was just gonna, you know, that was gonna happen. And I, I just wouldn't see it. There has to be some sort of buffer. And I do, I did give a lot of credibility to a couple of the points that were made relative to people that had lived in, had researched before they bought their property, and there had an expectation. And that, I think that was, that was pretty fair. That's, and it's different than a parcel that maybe is, has an entrance off another main thoroughfare, and it would have less impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I think they were different things.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the public? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, so Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next is Item F2. This is the Outdoor Cafe Text Amendment. Planning Director Haw, are we becoming like Paris now, and we're going to have outdoor cafes?
Evening, trustees. Thank you. Enclosed in your packet is a copy of the proposed text amendment to the C1, which is the Neighborhood Shopping District. It's one of the township's commercial districts. And currently, there are only two sites that are zoned C1 in the township. But there is the possibility with designations on the future land use map that other sites could be zoned as C1 as well. And in either case, it is an existing zoning district of the township, and it should be updated to reflect best practices. Track changes are shown in the enclosed ordinance for ease of review. There's two different components to this. The first would permit restaurants as a permitted land use in the C1 district. Right now, sit-down restaurants are only permitted as a special land use, which, you know, in reviewing other communities' standards for restaurants, it's, it's a bit unnecessarily burdensome on the applicant. The, any proposed restaurant use for a sit-down would still have to go through the regular planning process and site plan and parking and lighting requirements. So we don't find that that use would be extenuating different than other permitted uses in the C1 district. I'd like to make it clear, though, that drive-in restaurants and drive-through restaurants are still not permitted in the C1 district. There's no change to that. Right now, they're not permitted, and this ordinance in no way would permit them, either as a permitted or a special land use. And then, the second change associated with restaurant consideration, it's shown on page 66 of Article 12, is that restaurants as permitted under Article 12.1, that serve alcoholic beverages, would be permitted, provided that the following use restrictions would have to be adhered. So the first is that alcohol would only be permitted if it was accessory to a principal permitted use, and that it could only occupy the serving of alcohol more than 30% of the total gross floor area. And this is a common standard that we see in other communities in Metro Detroit, including the Gross Points, for instance, and it served them well. So this, this provision, for instance, would allow a tasting facility as part of a restaurant, but it would prevent the use of a bar or lounge from being the principal use of the establishment, which is something that you want to avoid in the C1 as it's more neighborhood serving and not a regional destination. And then also, the second use standard here to protect against that is that the service of alcohol will be limited to the hours of 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So again, a principal bar or lounge establishment would want to serve alcohol outside of those times. So that really limits the service offering. And then the second leg of the ordinance change deals with outdoor seating. And in taking a look at this ordinance, we realize that the C1 district has no provisions for outdoor seating, which is a common enjoyment for local business owners. And this provision just grants the opportunity for that to happen. And you'll notice in the cover memo that we've outlined the three existing criteria for outdoor cafes that are currently in the ordinance. The proposed changes to the ordinance list a multitude of different requirements that would then be reviewed before outdoor seating would be permitted. And this was based on a pretty extensive review that the Planning Commission did back in November of 2018, comparison against adjacent municipalities. And these were the provisions that were found most applicable. And then you'll also see in the packet, we've translated that to the outdoor cafe dining application. And on the second page of that, all of the requirements of the ordinance that would apply if this text amendment would go through are listed. And this is what any applicant or developer would see when applying for that. So you can see how that translates to a real-world situation. There's a model resolution in your packet for consideration. I'm happy to take questions. And just for your information, the Planning Commission did hold two different public hearings on this ordinance, one in 2018 and one last month in January. And there were no public comments.
Sorry, I'm scraping all over the place. Sorry about that.
Was this, was this really designed for one particular user?
79.
The conversation was brought up regarding restaurants and alcohol service in the C1 district. There are only two parcels right now that are zoned as such in the township. But when the Commission took a look at this ordinance and how it was being applied, they saw some holes in it and some unnecessary loopholes that any, any applicant would have to go through. And then in that process, they also identified the outdoor cafes and wanted just, since we were already in the process of looking at it, to making it the, you know, the best ordinance possible.
Laura, I have a question. The service of alcohol cannot occupy greater than 30% of the total gross floor area?
Correct.
We've already said 10,000 square foot is the max. So we're talking potentially 3,000 square foot that I can serve alcohol in? Does that sound right? That seems like a heck of a lot of room to serve alcohol in.
10,000 square feet's the limit for what?
10,000, it's 12.1.3 establishments which provide personal services, blah blah, not exceeding 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. So today, we have, you know, the barber shops and the laundromats, and we want to expand that. But I'm a little concerned if, you know, that 10,000, now I'm giving up 30% for alcohol, that seems like a heck of a lot of room to me.
Well, keep in mind also that the 10,000 square feet, if there were to be an establishment that was built to 10,000 square feet, there would have to be sufficient additional land on that parcel to, you know, house the landscaping, to house the parking, to house the circulation. And given the typical size of parcels in the C1 district, it likely could not accommodate 10,000 square feet.
But we are opening it up in case there was, right?
Correct. There would be that possibility.
So this goes back to my question about this really being provided for one particular user. I mean, there's a place that's already developed, already has a set number of square footage, and is this 30% total gross designed because that's what that person has set aside for this type of use?
Picnic Basket is zoned the C1 designation. That's correct. There has been no analysis of their floor area, 30%, whether or not that ratio would work for them. This is what has worked in other communities, and that's why it was recommended.
What's the other C1 parcel in the township? You said there were two.
It's the, the parcel that came in for the use variance recently on Ann Arbor Trail, just east of Hagerty.
Oh, yeah.
And that may see redevelopment in the future. But the size limitations on that in order to provide parking and seating inside, I believe also in the C1 that there, there is a lot coverage percentage that couldn't be exceeded. So that would also greatly decrease the amount of square footage in total.
We know a couple of years ago, we had an issue with the Baskin Robbins on Ann Arbor Road. They wanted, that was a grand reopening, and we had quite a controversy over the fact that we, I think we ended up granting or temporarily granting some kind of outdoor seating arrangement that just did not, didn't go right that day. And, and we wouldn't want to, is there a way to read this so that they could, an operation like that could put tables up practically in the parking lot and start serving people?
So the ordinance provides that it has to at least follow administrative site plan. And if it doesn't meet the, I would say, the plethora of standards that we've now added, then they would have to go to the Planning Commission for review and consideration of the use. So if anything, the standards are stricter than they currently exist today.
What about the proposed Buddy's site? Don't they want outdoor seating as well?
They do. They are actually located in the industrial district.
Could you speak up?
I'm sorry. They're, they're located in the industrial district, so a different zoning designation.
So Laura, help me with the definition of a restaurant. If I'm interpreting this correctly, this ordinance would approve a restaurant that's, the restaurant is not the primary use of the facility. So if somebody wanted to move in there with a restaurant and serve alcohol, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be allowed under this ordinance?
A restaurant would be permitted, a sit-down restaurant only. And if they served alcohol, it could only be for 30% of that floor area. So whether they had a bar space for tasting and the counter where they actually serve, that would be included in that usable floor area. They couldn't serve it to every table.
And hat repair.
I have a question, which seems like a nit, but in 5A, I believe the word "principal" should be spelled P-A-L. Because principal A-L means first or highest in rank importance or value. So someone could be upholding their own principles, but that'd be different from the principal or major use. So should that be a P-A-L?
I think you're right on that.
Is your middle name Webster?
No.
I'm here for a purpose, obviously.
And shoe and hat repair shops, Jack, when you're getting your hat repaired, if you want a beer, you can have one.
I'm getting a big head.
All right. Any other non-literary questions for Laura? Okay, any comments or questions from the public on this item? Okay. All right. Then let us, let us vote.
We need a motion.
I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Dempsey.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-02-12-12, authorizing a text amendment to Article 12, C1, Neighborhood Shopping District of the Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 99.
Okay. Motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
No.
Motion pass.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is Item F3. This is a proposed letter of agreement with the Plymouth Canton Little League for priority use of baseball diamond number four at Township Park. In my cover letter, this particular agreement is very similar to the one that we did last year with the Plymouth Rain Soccer Club at Lake Point Soccer Fields. It would also have a duration of one year. As part of this agreement, the club, which would be the Plymouth Canton Little League, would perform maintenance and prep work on Field Four and undertake four separate community improvement projects totaling roughly $17,000 in 2019. And I go on to explain what those are. You will find that in this particular agreement, it is very, very closely aligned with the Plymouth Rain. We basically took that and moved a few things around and expanded on what the community improvement projects would be. So I've been working with, with us tonight is Jeff Holt. He is the, what is your title?
President.
You're the president
Yes, sir.
of the Plymouth Canton Little League. We have been working together now for two years. We, we met when the Plymouth Canton Little League came to Plymouth Township with basically $80,000 worth of engineering work, equipment and lights for the lighting of ball diamond number four, which has gone to be one of the, certainly one of the most appealing diamonds in the four, of the four at, at Township Park. The LED lights there are state-of-the-art. I think everybody enjoys playing there, and it's really become a great amenity to the, to the entire park. So this contract would, again, would last for one year. There are certain obligations of the, of the Little League, and then there are certain responsibilities that we have as well. Much like the, much like the Plymouth Rain contract, though, we hold all the cards. We still get to decide who goes what, when, and how. And, you know, but it's all, it's based on cooperation and trust and making sure that, that we make maximum use of these public facilities, and that they are continually open to the public and that the public still has access to them. At the end of the day, we're trying to work out a plan that, that enhances the amenities at the park, but that also, I, I hope puts the kids first, because it's a public park, and we, we want kids to have fun. We want their parents to have fun. And we want them to enjoy the, the game of baseball and softball. And I've learned through Jeffrey that Plymouth Township, those, those four diamonds up there at McLempha Park are really some of the best in, in the area. And so we want to do what we can to, to make them better for everybody's enjoyment. So Jeff, I'd like you, you have some slides here tonight. I'd like you to walk them through us, and then I'd like you to entertain some questions from, from the Board.
Thank you, Supervisor Heisey. And could you, could you hold the mic, the handheld mic?
Yes, I can do that, absolutely. Thank you Supervisor Heisey, and thank you to the Board.
Just let me know when you want to switch a slide.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide. So I want to just give you a little bit of an overview of who Plymouth Canton Little League actually is. We are chartered, sanctioned by Little League International. That is the organization founded by a brilliant man, Carl Stotts, way back in 1938, '39, and has been doing business and playing youth and stewarding and supervising youth baseball ever since. That pledge on the right, that's still the pledge. We love that pledge. That was written in the 1950s, and it still is a beautiful capsule of what Little League baseball is all about. And it's why I love Little League baseball. We are a 501(c)(3), and our mission is to serve our kids, our families, our league and our communities. If you go to the next slide, really, for me, it comes down to this. I love kids and I love baseball. I love kids and I love baseball. I've been around the game my whole life. I grew up playing on a field name from my father in rural North Carolina. That picture on the far right is actually me coaching my little guy when he was playing in our league. He's now a freshman in high school up at Orchard Lake St. Mary's, so time flies. Good ball player, by the way. But it really is all about the kids. If you go to the next slide, these are our league boundaries. We are sanctioned also through District 16 from Little League International. There are roughly 11 to 12 leagues within District 16. One of the reasons we're interested to do more with the board and the township with the fields is we would love someday to be able to host district tournaments here in Plymouth. Every year for postseason play, leading up to that big All-Star series in Williamsport, we have to go to Tecumseh and Blissfield and other locations. Great facilities, and those farm boys are good baseball players. We'd like to be able to host tournaments here. One of the things Little League does specify for hosting tournaments is a grass infield. That seems like an onerous ask, but they want the kids to feel like they're big Leaguers, and I love that about Little League. There's a method to their madness. On the next slide, that's our Board of Directors. Up there at the top, that's me. I am president. We've got a great Board of Directors. Don Lorman, Cassandra Fletcher-Martin, Randy Gerber, Maria Kutschler, and two new vice presidents this year, Janilso Hill and Dave Eason, as we're adding fast pitch girls softball for the first time. And so we're in the process of going through registrations for that. On the next slide, I wanted to give you just a little bit of a sense for where we've been and where we're going and what we're trying to do. We have had significant growth. That's also an issue that has exacerbated what is always a bottleneck for us, availability of fields and playing locations. We do work with GCY for fields. We will continue to work with GCY for fields. That's always part of our method and our intent. All we're looking for here is, with those beautiful lights that we seeded to the township last year and with Supervisor Heisey and the board, is more use of those fields during the week, weeknights, to be able to enjoy those great lights, and then to continue to upgrade specifically Field Four in particular, with that ultimate aim of someday maybe being able to host a District 16 tournament right here in Plymouth. That has some economic tails, I think, for the community. That's not the primary motivation, but it's good for everybody. And I want you to also know that the financial growth that we've achieved has been through really exacting and rigorous financial controls. I have a CFO, my, sorry, my Vice President of Finance is CFO of a nonprofit, Fair Food Distributors in Ann Arbor. I forget the exact name of the organization now, but she is CFO for that nonprofit. I also have a gentleman who works jointly with me at Ford Motor Company. I'm a 33-year veteran of the Ford Motor Company in finance, who is my audit oversight director. And so we are very attentive to our finances and being good stewards of the resources that our constituents entrust to us. We do that to give us the opportunity to offset league fees and costs and to invest in our players and community. And ultimately, we're looking to establish greater long-term sustainability for PCLL. You know, without going into detail, as I said, I grew up on a field name from my father in rural North Carolina. We would love it if someday we could find the right partner, right location, right land, and make some investments to have our own facilities, frankly, and have our own home. Until such time, we're looking for great partnerships with good relationships with people like the township, where we can jointly improve facilities and also give us a little more use of fields and locations to help us with this growth challenge we have. With that, I think we could probably transition to the document and the agreement. Really, for me, it comes down to this. We want to be able to leverage and take advantage of those wonderful lights that we jointly worked with the township to install last year, play some more night games there in the months of May and June. You know, our season runs late April to mid-July. That's it. We don't play fall ball. It's a, you know, it's a short burst season, a lot of fun. Part of that is because the Little League World Series is in August. We have to be wrapped up before that. So we'd like to be able to play more night games there, have a little more command of that Field Four, so we could get more games in during the night under those great lights, and in favor of continuing to make additional improvements to the diamonds up there, lighting the flagpole, for example. That's in the document. Putting fences down the base, the foul lines on either side. Frankly, that's a good safety enhancement. We constantly are having to ask people to get back, you know, so that Grandma and Grandpa don't catch a foul ball. We don't want them to get pegged. And then, again, one of the other projects that we specked out is the grass infield. Ultimately, that is an enabler to being able to host district tournaments. So that's the high level. I don't have more. I'm happy to entertain questions.
One of the questions that I've received in the last couple of days deals with play on Saturday. The, I guess the rumor is that you would want to play all day on Saturday from sunup to sundown. I don't know how that works, but could you explain that?
Yeah, so I would envision no change to the arrangement we have on Saturdays. The way it works on Saturdays is our friends from GCY have full use of the four fields in the mornings. We go on around noon or 1:00, and we play into the dusk hours every Saturday. I don't see that changing. I'm not trying to preclude anybody from playing games on Field Four. That's not the intent at all.
Now, what about fall leagues and fall play? Do you, because in the contract, it does say that you are, that fall may be an option. What, at this point, what would that look like? Would that be the fast pitch softball, or would that be baseball or what?
If we did fall ball, so very good question Supervisor Heisey. Right now, we do not offer fall ball. To be honest with you, after the season's over and with the growth we've had going on and various engagements and events, I don't have anything left to give. So I don't see us adding fall ball in the near future. Members of my board bring this up on occasion. Right now, when we do fall ball, we actually send teams, and we play in GCY's fall league. I see that probably being the case for the next few years. I don't want to preclude the point or the idea that someday we might try to implement a fall season. We don't do it now. We tend to, we play our season that culminates and ends in July, mid-July, or late July, if we run in deep into the state playoffs. And then fall ball, for the now, we play in GCY. But I would like to have that just in my head. Granted, this agreement's only a one-year agreement in any case, so it's certainly not going to happen in 2019, but it's something that I think I'd be, I would be misleading you and the other people here if I said we would never look at that.
And I'll ask you the same question that I asked basically the Plymouth Rain on the soccer thing. We, this would certainly be a priority contract. I don't think anybody's hiding that fact, but we ultimately control those fields. They are financed by the taxpayers, and the public is allowed to use them. So other than the times that we would specify and agree with you on, we certainly would encourage other individuals, if you just want to go out there and play ball and have fun, if there is some kind of neighborhood kids that want to go out there and play ball, I mean, nobody's stopping them from doing that.
For sure not. I've done that with my son forever. And, you know, we have made numerous arrangements to address some of our field needs. Last year, we leased space at St. John Newman, that's the Catholic Church of Mon Warren. We also leased space at Plymouth Christian Academy over in Joy. I had a really productive meeting with a senior pastor and youth pastor at Church of the Nazarene down the street here today. Had a great lunch with them. We're probably going to lease field space for them. I leased space on Heinz Drive. The president of Van Buren Little League has given us access to a field. Nobody wants to play there. The complaints people give me are, I registered to play baseball in Plymouth and Canton. I don't want to practice in Van Buren. By the way, we hear gunshots. There's a shooting range adjacent to that field for the Van Buren.
Glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
What's GCY again?
I'm sorry, Greater Canton Youth Baseball and Softball Association. That is another youth league in the Plymouth Canton communities.
How does that compare in size to the?
They're about, Anne Marie, they're probably three times our size. They're something on the order of 1,500 kids, I would guess. Okay, so five times.
Just a quick question about the fencing over here, the guy with the long-neck microphone. The fencing you're talking about, is that simply to keep people behind a fence? It's not major league-style fencing?
No, no, no.
10 feet tall or?
The idea behind that is just, so the backstops and out to the dugouts is all fenced, and then there's a, there's a long stretch of open space out to the foul pole, and then the outfield fence goes around and culminates on the other side at the next foul pole. And then again, other side, same thing, open space, fencing at the dugouts, and back behind the backstop. So again, for district play, Little League, for safety purposes, would specify, they don't want parents getting into the playing, into the playing field area.
Who's safety you're talking about?
Parents and kids. You can imagine a kid chasing a foul ball and, you know.
Or something else, yes. Go ahead.
I mean, you could imagine a kid chasing a foul ball and plowing into some fans sitting alongside, or maybe a grandmother who's really not that attentive, and a foul ball comes down the line and hits her, you know, we just, things like that. Little League, I love Little League. They, sometimes they can be a little bureaucratic. They're an 80-plus-year-old organization, but they do things right, and they know what they're doing.
Is there a, just curious, outfield fences, is there supposed to be a height, a certain specified height?
The regulation fencing distance is 200 feet, and you'll see in Williamsport, they're at 225. And, you know, you'll see fences that go up to here, a little higher. Your fences are fine. You have the best Little League baseball diamonds in the Plymouth and Canton communities. They're the only, those four fields are the only four regulation Little League fields in all of Plymouth Canton.
No more questions.
But we don't have any outfield fences on any of those four fields right now.
You do. You have outfield fencing, and then there's open space between the foul pole and the dugout.
Right, all right.
So on four, if we could set that field up to be able to play district tournaments there and bring the other 11 or 12 leagues in District 16 into Plymouth, Little League is going to specify that you must have fenced in playing surfaces, and they're going to specify we have to have a grass infield. Those are specifically two of the items in the proposal, and that's why.
I do have one more question. Like, so for those kinds of tournaments, how many people are involved totally with everybody?
It depends on the division. Little League has a lot of divisions. I think we would, we would have to walk before we could run, so we would probably want to host the nine-to-eleven division, not the eight-to-ten or the ten-to-twelve. Those are the, the eight-to-ten is a little bit larger group of kids. The ten-to-twelve is the premier major league division that you see on television. So we would probably want to start with the nine-to-eleven division. Not every league will field an All-Star team. So of the 11, 12 leagues in District 16, eight-to-ten will field an All-Star team in the nine-to-eleven bracket. So imagine 13 kids on a roster, 14 kids on a roster, eight-to-10 leagues-ish from, you know, communities all over Southeast Michigan, Tecumseh, Blissfield, Ash Carlton, Madison, Van Buren, Plymouth Canton.
Okay. So I really ask that question on behalf of Trustee Heitman. He's into economic development, so he'd love to see the spin-off benefits from having a lot of people come and patronize our establishment, so.
Thank you, Jack. And he's wearing a pink sweater.
I have two questions. How is the scheduling worked out right now between your Little League and the PCL?
With GCY?
GCY, sorry.
So basically, GCY controls allocation of the, all the Plymouth Canton Community School fields. They also have some really good facilities in Canton, the Canton Softball Center, for example. Those are the cloverleaf designs down there. Those are great fields. The only issue is they're leftover, or they're repurposed 1970-era softball diamonds that are, they're good for big kid baseball. They're not so great for little kid baseball. And the layout, sometimes you get foul balls flying in. So we work through them for field availability. They do work with us. As I said, we've been growing fast. Every year, my perennial bottlenecks are always two things, umpires and diamonds. So that's why we've gone out, I'm the guy that went out on Heinz Drive, you know, 10 years ago, and leased diamonds up and down Heinz Drive from Scott Marr and his guys over there at Wayne County Parks and Rec. I had to. We just, you know, we had 45 teams last year, and we would assign practice times for those 45 teams during the week where they had one-hour blocks. That's, that's fine for T-ball. That's not fine for minors, majors, and juniors. So fields is always a constraint. We do work with GCY, but we just never seem to have enough space.
But you have to go through them to get all your fields scheduled?
It depends on the fields. We also have played games, for example, at Massey Field. Steve Anderson over in City of Plymouth, great guy. We worked with him starting probably three, four years ago. You know, we just worked that on our own. The other fields I've talked about, you know, Church of the Nazarene, St. John's Newman, Plymouth Christian Academy, those are deals that we've struck on our own. Heinz Drive, those are deals we've struck on our own. Most of the other fields that we do play on, even McLumpa, you know, Plymouth Township Park, historically, we've worked, we've had to work with GCY because they are, they have, they are, they are responsible through PCCS for field allocations. So we tend to work through them and with them. And every February, March, we come here and have a conversation upstairs about what are our needs for this year. We just, because of our growth and because of this perennial constraint that we always juggle, I'm just looking for new and different ways to ameliorate or resolve an issue that I know I'm going to continue to have. Our, we're not through a registration. Every year, we run registration from Black Friday to Presidents' Day. We've taught our people that. So I'm on, I'm on pace with last year's registrations with a week to go. I expect we'll be up again. Maybe it won't be 25%, but I expect to be up again. So, you know, I'm, this is not going to go away. I'm going to continue to have a challenge with fields.
My other question is, and it wasn't clear in the verbiage of the contract, but it said that Plymouth Township would be responsible for watering the field. Who would be responsible for the cutting in the moment?
So you do it now. You cut and water the fields now. I wouldn't propose that we would change that. I think the normal maintenance services that you provide on those fields today, I would assume Plymouth Township would continue to provide. Anything that we do significantly new and different above, you know, that, we would take on. We pay an organization, Lock Lamond, to prep the fields for us. On Saturdays, for example, he drags them and lines them. We'll still do that. But the normal routine maintenance and care of the park facility, I don't, we're not, we don't have financial resources to take things like that on.
Are you concerned, you know, when you put in a grass infield? Skin infields are nice. They're easy to maintain. Once you put in a grass infield, you've got to really maintain the heck out of that grass. You've got to edge it on a weekly basis.
Yep.
I'm concerned that if you put in a grass infield and you rely on our park people to maintain that, you're going to wish you hadn't put in a grass infield.
I think we could certainly look at annual, at the end of the day, if there were things like edging, you know, building up the base pass, that, you always get the base pass getting worn down, you know, and you get the lips on the infield, things like that. I'm, we would certainly be willing to look at things like that, specifically tied to the grass infield annually, to bring that playing surface back into good shape.
It may be premature to have this discussion, but I think our new golf course operator, Tony Moscone, has a lot of experience in running outdoor and indoor sports facilities.
Wonderful.
You know, at some point, once the, once, if and when infield grass is installed, it may, maybe in everybody's best interest to talk to him and see what they can do to keep it.
Completely supportive.
To keep it accurate and safe.
I actually have a general contractor on my Board of Directors, too, that I would like to have engaged to help us work with you. So that's, that's great, Kirk. We would certainly be supportive of that.
Out of curiosity, that, at first base, do you, are there, do they use two bags now, or?
So that's a great question. Little League does like safety bases. We don't have them up at the Township Park now, the double bags. We don't have those there now. We could, I'm not averse to actually putting new bases in up there. Frankly, it's 600 bucks a field for bases, you know, and so things like that, I would say we could even work with you on. I'm open to ideas like that. We, ideally, you would want, that's a great question. You'd want in-ground anchor, break, safety breakaway bases, dual bags at first base. The advantage there is the double bag gets the first baseman further away from the runner that's trucking down the line.
I broke my knee on the Canton fields playing softball for that exact reason, the first baseman. $26,000 in surgery later.
Yeah, we don't want that.
You were 60 years. And I retired after that.
You know, by the way, just to that point, one of the things that I'm really proud of with Plymouth Canton Little League, those lights that Supervisor Heisey spoke about, we actually were granted those from Little League International in 2012, 2013 for our safety record. We're, PCLL was recognized nationally, and those lights were granted to us from Musco through Little League International. And we've been setting on them for a while, and the new administration took over. I really liked what I was seeing. I, Steve Anderson introduced me to Kirk. We came over and talked with him, and I thought, you know, there's an open diamond there that doesn't have lights. It's time to do something with these lights. So that's how, that's the genesis for that.
I'm curious if the others.
Yeah, oh, no, we're going to.
Have any comment?
Yeah, no, we will. Yeah. Any, at this time, any comments or questions by the public?
You have to come up to the podium and state your name and address for our secretary.
Just clarification while he's coming up. It does, this is a two-year contract. It expires at the end of 2020.
Okay. Got it. Well, okay, I mean, I'm. Okay.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mark Smith. I am the president of GCYBSA, and I have been for the past five years. I am here with Anne Marie, who is the, from the Canton Township, and we're here to just talk about this proposal. So as was stated before, we have over 2,500 Personally, myself, I don't know if any of you are familiar with, I started the small ball program, we have a small ball program where we teach four-year-olds how to play T-ball, it makes for better baseball as they get older. I have worked with numerous kids and the coaches over at the high school, there are players that are there right now that are freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, I have all coached every single one of them at Salem, Plymouth, or Canton. What we have done is we have created this partnership, as well as contribute to the McLuffa Park, significantly, we donated $20,000 for the pavilion that's there, for the number of years, we only had outdoor porta-potties, and, you know, now we have indoor bathrooms, which is good, and then two, we also average between $5,000 and $10,000 a year on field prep and making sure the fields are in good condition for kids to play on. I've been up there numerous years, working with my team, working with other teams, going up there, running camps, doing different things, making sure that kids are learning the game the right way. We are, want to make sure that, one, the partnership continues, and then, two, with the amount of kids that we have playing, that the field usage that we've had in working with partnership with the Plymouth Canton Little League continues. Primarily our age groups that play on Friday nights, which is some of our largest groups, those are the kids that are playing coach pitch, they're out there playing, they're out there having a good time, some of the games have to be played at night, and so therefore, you know, they're out there late at night, and then, of course, on Saturday mornings. So we are here to make sure that we get a chance to continue that partnership, as well as to help the Plymouth Canton Little League any way we can. You know, there are different types of baseball, you know, I do coaches' clinics, free things, I work with kids in the immediate community, all kids are our kids, so it doesn't matter where they play, we just want to make sure that they're learning the game the right way and having a good time doing it. So that's what we want to talk about tonight, so, Anne Marie, did you have anything else to add? Also, if you're interested, I do have extensive knowledge on baseball development, fields, things like that, I know a lot of guys that are in major league scouts and things like that, so I understand what we're trying to do with the fields and tournaments and stuff, and I could always help if he needed some help.
Could you teach Bob how not to break his leg playing?
I can't teach him that, I retired myself as well.
Hello, Anne Marie Caravalla, I'm one of the board members on the Greater Canton Youth Baseball Association, and I work at Canton Township. I just wanted to give a little more info, I think, I forget who asked the question, but what is GCY? That is a question that comes up very often, and one of our biggest goals is to educate parents and families about how to find youth sports, whether it's, you know, lacrosse, baseball, softball, basketball, all that stuff, so, basically, I just wanted to make sure you understand that in 2005, Greater Canton Baseball was born out of bylaws that were set up between Plymouth Township, Canton Township, and the schools. So GCYBSA is your program, you were set up in the bylaws, you've been represented at all of the board meetings since 2005 with a representative, typically, it's been the township supervisor for many years, and then, but it could be any appointed staff that has attended the meetings, and we've also held many meetings here at Plymouth Township over the years, and, and that's kind of the thing. The idea at that point was there were a lot of requests that come to all the entities, like the schools, and the, and the townships, municipalities, and, and the church groups, and Special Olympics, and hundreds of requests that come out, and it was getting so confusing about how to allocate fairly and, and better for the different youth groups and the different dimensions, and how to maximize. Early on, you would get maybe just saying like a travel team, and early on, I could name a lot, but just like a fast pitch group, we had the Pride at that time, we had different travel baseball, and they would get assigned a field, and then they felt like that's their field, they own it, whether they practice that night, or play that night, or do or don't, and it really became this situation where there's hundreds of requests out there, very tough to manage, and fields, and especially the younger kids, I'll be truthful, the T-ball, the coach pitch, that group was kind of getting neglected on access to quality fields, the best fields we have. And I do agree with, who mentioned that before, Plymouth Township's fields, this park is one of the best, it is the best park in this area with four fields, it's beautiful, we love it, all of the community families, you know, rave about, really, all of the school fields that got put in, nine fields were added in between that time of 2005 to 10, and Canton Township, Griffin Park, Flodden Park, and the SportsCenter Heritage. So, we worked together, and the idea at that time was to create the identity of a unified effort, a kind of streamlined effort to share that space. And so, GCY doesn't have the control, it's the three entities that work together to serve the whole, and within that, we've always provided any requests for Special Olympics, Little League, the church groups, any group, anyone reaches out, but it became smoother to do it kind of a one shop clearinghouse for that, so that's how we've done that. In addition, I just want to reiterate with what Mark said, there's just been a huge, huge contribution of dollars and resources and efforts at Plymouth Township Park, we've spearheaded the effort to make it the greatest place that it is right now, and we just want to make sure that that's recognized in that effort, and doing this where we start to peel off and get to more exclusive use or not working together on this front, we can share resources when it comes to fencing and turf companies, and we just refurbished 12 fields, so a lot of that working together and talking upfront can help with that kind of capital improvement. We're just really proud of the, you know, the 30,000 people that we've been serving, the families, we've been able to introduce a special needs program through your concession at the pavilion, and we train youth development in special needs, and we just want to continue these types of programs. So we just want to make sure you know that, you know, GCY is your program, we've worked with Little League, Kevin Koschowski, all the presidents over the years, we've been able, we're, we're excited that they want to work on field four, that's great, the lights were in addition, but we want to make sure that it makes sense to, again, the grass fields are very, very high maintenance type of situations, and it just can knock out certain age groups if you don't set up, you know, certain dimensions, you kind of knock out that availability. We were sent in a situation, or a request from our Lady Good Council via your staff, and we want to make sure that they get use, and so some of that is part of this whole conglomerate, so that's kind of how it goes.
So, do you support this, or do you not support it, or?
We would really like to, we would rather keep, so we've been doing the same permit process since 2005, which has really worked well, we often get called from other municipalities and recreation and athletic groups, how do you guys do this as three entities in one, and serve all of these populations, from T-ball to competitive tournaments, to Little League, to Special Olympics, so, we just really don't support the overall change because we really think the machine is working very well, and we would, of course, grant more use together if that's what's needed, we did that last year, we've worked with Little League on helping them with their opening ceremony for over years, we've done it at multiple sites, we help them with their mini tournaments that they run, we would help them with anything they need, and we would continue to do that. So it's full support of whatever's needed to help make their group continue. I know Jeff mentioned that they're growing and they're trying to expand and add in, I know they have a section of Westland and Fast Pitch that they're trying to grow, but if you went back before the numbers on the grid, they had about 400 or 500 prior to the slide from today, so they're kind of getting back. And it's a popular different product, they do a special drafting, and they follow that national, the way we organize teams is that we really let kids play with friends from their schools, and parents have really loved that, they like playing with some friends from schools and forming teams that fit in the right competitive level.
But you would prefer we don't get into this contract, or?
Correct. Or at least talk about it more, we didn't have, we just found out yesterday that, and we've been doing this together for 15 years, and we just found out that this was actually going to happen in this way. So we just wanted to talk about it more and make sure that it, that we understand the details of the agreement. I know that Lake Point exists and soccer, but I don't think they had a pre-existing group, I'm not sure about that, but was there a pre-existing group out there that had been running programs for a number of years, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, the Plymouth Rain is a.
Right.
An organized league, they are a travel league, I believe.
Right.
They draw from a large area, I think they do have criteria that they establish, and what it did is it, it created a priority for them in exchange for them doing, frankly, a better job of maintaining the field.
Gotcha.
And, you know, so it's a regular investment for them.
Right.
That benefits both sides.
Yeah, I mean, the partnerships are great, and we definitely have always said, I mean, GCY has been putting 15,000, 20,000 over the years into Plymouth Township Park, along with the schools, along with the Canton Township fields, like, all together, but we never said because of that, that we weren't going to try to give everyone accessibility that needed it.
So in the absence of this contract, then, you would continue to operate, and I guess, I don't know, I use the word collaborate, as you have in the past?
Correct.
Can you?
There ever been any situations where you, maybe not you personally, but prior boards really did not cooperate very well with, across these organizations?
Not really, I mean, there is, you know, you're talking about, everybody wants 6:00 to 8:00 PM for about eight weeks is what we're talking about right now.
That's my point.
So, you know, it's really talking about that timeframe, and then it's really managing, you know, like on Friday night, like Mark said, we do coach pitch, so it's hard to take one coach pitch team and stick it over on an elementary, you'd like to kind of have those groupings, or if you're hiring umpires, you do back-to-backs, 6 o'clock and 8 o'clock games, but we haven't had, over the years, too much trouble working that out.
I used to umpire Little League.
Did you? Alright.
When I was about.
Hey, we need way more umpires, so, spread the gospel on that.
Can you, can you both parties give me a sense for the demographics of your population? In other words, how many within your 2,500 are from the Plymouth community versus Canton?
Sure, so we have about 2,500 players per year, and about 500 of those, or about 25% are Plymouth residents, and then the others are either Canton Township, and then a small, maybe a 10% of other, kind of, because if you're in the school district, if you go to any of the schools, you're considered a resident at that point to participate.
And what about the Little League program, what's the percentage of?
I need to confirm this, the top minus like 60, 40, we're still skewed toward Canton, but we do have a higher propensity for, I'll confirm, I will confirm.
What does it cost, on average?
On average, around 125, depending what age group you're in, about the same, you get about 10 games per season, you get, you know, practice a week, and playoffs, or All-Stars, they call it All-Stars.
Yeah, we, Little League mandates 12 regular season games to be eligible for All-Star play, and it's, as Anne Marie said, our price ranges depend on, depends on the division, if you're talking juniors, the 13, 14-year-olds that are almost high school age, it's a bit more, 130, something like that, if you're talking T-ballers, it's 80, 90.
What used to happen is groups would request fields, and then they would tell the parents, we'll give you 14 games, we'll give you three practices a week, and it got, and then you start talking about that 6:00 to 8:00 time for those set of fields, and it just wasn't fair. And so the idea is that we look at the field setup as a fleet of fields or an inventory, and that includes the schools. What's happened lately in the schools with the onset of a high school lacrosse, so the high school lacrosse program has really knocked all of the baseball use at the middle schools. So it's, again, not saying that one group having a field is fine, but the reality is any changes at any of the school activities or either township affects the whole group, and so there's been a lot of, there's just different changes regarding that, things that are happening at the school fields, too.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Okay, yeah. Okay, I think what we'll do, and Mr. Holt has agreed that this would be a one-year contract, so we could make it effective through December 31st of 2019, I don't know, is that too aggressive with, with respect to the possible, the proposed improvements there?
I don't think so, Kurt. I'm sorry. No, I don't, I don't think so, we've already, I've already been to my board and secured support for the funding and the, and the capital project, capital improvement projects, and our intention is to try to complete all by the end of 19, subject to, you know, field availability, the grass infield, I'm thinking, could be a challenge, but it was our intention to try to finish it by the end of the year, that was always the goal, so certainly the flag project, I think we'll jump on right away.
Yeah, I mean, the flag project is one that is just about there, we've had a lot of problems trying to keep that eliminated.
Would you put the, would you put the grass infield in before the season or after?
No, it would be, there's, we would, ideally, you want to do that in spring or fall, for us, it would make more sense to do it in fall, the spring season is going to be on top of us.
Well, then, I guess what's the board's pleasure, would you want to make this expire in, at the end of 2020? No?
I'm not, I'm not convinced that we should, we should do this.
Alright, so what we could do then, Jeff, is we'll make it expire through December 31st, 2019.
Okay. So, I guess, will there continue to be collaboration and coordination between these two entities with regard to how our?
I think there should always be collaboration, I think that's what I've heard from everybody here tonight, you know.
Is it Ms. Viesel who is the point person on this, or something?
For the most part, but, you know, we, because we don't have, we're not Canton, we don't have a recreation department and an organized program, so I think she gets the phone calls from the, both groups kind of by default, you know.
So I guess the fact?
But Sarah Vessel does not, she does not do scheduling or, or anything like that.
So I guess one of the issues would be, if we did this for one year and there were scheduling issues and lack of collaboration, that would be a factor, I guess, in whether we'd do this again, but is that kind of what we're looking at?
If you want to look at it as a, you know, a pilot project, I look at it as we, the township, are getting value added to these fields, and in return, they get a, they have priority use, and it's, again, it's the same kind of deal that we made with the Plymouth Rain, that seems to be working well, and, you know, maybe we do a separate, maybe down the road, we do a deal with GCY, and, you know, we.
Yeah, but that was a different, that was a different situation.
Yeah, I, I think I would feel a lot better had the two groups met, discussed these issues, had an agreement in hand about how they were going to share the resources here, and then come to the board with an agreement that they both could live with, I think that makes a lot more sense to me than just, you know, offhand doing this.
But there, no, it's not offhand, I mean, the Little League is getting one, one out of the three fields, so, getting access.
Well, there, I didn't sense that there were change in the schedule by the Little League for this year.
It's one of the four fields, we absolutely will.
Let's get you on the record.
You don't have to run.
Yeah, don't injure yourself.
Do a couple laps, would you?
Push on, it's one of, there's four fields up there, it should be on green. Takes a second to come on.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta wait a few seconds.
Sandy, please. Sorry. Yeah, push the other, push the other mic, turn the other mic on and have him lean into it, push it on, lean into it.
So, is that good? So there are, there are four fields up there, there, as I said, they're fantastic fields, this would really be for one field, and the intention really is weeknights on the one field, there's no change on Saturday, and frankly, I'm happy to work with GCY and Anne Marie and the team, if they have some special, you know, specific needs for Friday nights, okay, that, no problem, I would like to be able to play games there, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, we could give up Friday, you know, I could make that concession right now. that concession right now. So I'm happy to continue to collaborate. Again, you know, I'm leasing fields all over the place and working with local churches, which I'm, we will continue to do and happy to do because as we continue to grow, I just, we're struggling. And I know they have the same challenges. I just, we're trying to look at things and do things differently and build relationships with organizations like Charter Township of Plymouth. So that's the idea.
And I, I do appreciate that. I, I mean, I would echo that sentiment that it would have been, I think, preferable if you had had a written agreement, what you were going to do beforehand. Because, you know, I mean, people can change. Not you personally, but I mean, you know, you could win the lottery tomorrow and we never see you again and your successor.
You'd still see me. I'd still be doing baseball.
But it's a one-year deal and we still have the final say. I mean, I, it's, you could make the same arguments with Plymouth Rain contract, too.
Well, let's not keep throwing the Plymouth Rain up as, as something that we want to look at. Plymouth Rain think they own the fields still, even though they don't. People still get thrown off the fields because it's the Plymouth Rain field.
Do they?
Yes, they do.
Interesting.
And it's been like that for 10 years. So
Okay, well, but we haven't been here for 10 years and if stuff like that is happening, then they should let us know. Okay? All right. Everybody, I think we're all set then. Then I move that the Board of Trustees approve Resolution 2019-021213 authorizing the letter of agreement between the Charter Township of Plymouth and the Plymouth Canton Little League allowing for priority use of Field 4 for a term expiring December 31st, 2019 and ongoing enhancements to Plymouth Township Park and authorize supervisor and clerk to sign same. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Dempsey. Any further discussion? Then Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
No.
Trustee Hightman?
No.
Treasurer Clinton?
No.
Clerk Vorba?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to item four. This is a new fire engine ladder truck.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I'd like to make a motion that this item be considered, F4, be considered only for discussion purposes and that any vote be moved to a time when we have a full complement of the board in attendance.
I rule that that is out of order. If you want, if you don't want to discuss this tonight, then the proper motion should be to table it.
No, you can make a motion to
Postpone it.
You can make, you can make a motion to, for discussion only and postpone a vote.
Postpone it to a next meeting. Table means you bring it back to the same meeting.
Okay, so restate your motion then.
The purpose of my motion is to wait till we have a full complement of people. This is a million-dollar contract and I think that this needs to be fully vetted by everyone. We have allowed several times when a trustee or full-time board member made a request to be present during these type of things. We, we've allowed that and I think it's proper. We've had a, a trustee ask that. So my motion is that we postpone this until we have a full complement.
But we still would have discussion tonight.
That's what I tried to do the first time.
Okay, so your, so your motion is to postpone a vote, but still have discussion?
Correct.
But why discuss it if we're not going to vote?
Well, just to have the people who are here to, opportunity to discuss. We got people prepare a presentation and, and we're all here except for trustee Kermy.
So he can watch, he can watch the video?
He can watch the video and get up to speed.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm curious, though, about the idea of a full complement. So if I'm ill at the next meeting, there could be no vote?
No vote until there's a full complement.
I don't think that's even legal. Mr. Bennett, would you opine on that? I don't believe there is any requirement under state law or township ordinance that we cannot have a vote, that we could, that we, we cannot have votes without a full complement of trustees.
Maybe you can't put that condition on it, but you can still make a motion to postpone it, postpone the vote.
There is no, nothing in the law that says that all members of the board must be present. There's certain provisions of the law that require a majority vote of the entire board rather than a majority of a quorum. However, there's also nothing else that says that a motion that the clerk made, that, that there's nothing inappropriate about that motion. So it's not necessary that they all be here, but there's nothing inappropriate about Clerk Vorba's motion.
No, and I'm, I don't believe there is either, other than there is no proviso that, that for the future, that all members of this board need to be present in order to cast votes. I think that was
No, but, but
Jack's question.
So the next meeting, someone could bring up this motion again, a different motion.
You're asking, you're asking as a courtesy.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Okay. So the motion is to postpone any votes on this matter tonight, but to still have discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. The vote, a yes vote would be to postpone a vote tonight. A no vote would be to proceed as planned under the agenda.
Could, could, before we vote on that, could I just inquire, is there a reason why there was action contemplated tonight, a vote tonight? Is there something time-sensitive? Or is there any downside?
There is a time-sensitive component. If we do not make this purchase by February, or February 28th of this month, we will see a 3% price increase in this product, which is a standard
That's nonsense.
That's, that's nonsense. And I want to tell you, as a person who's negotiated million-dollar deals, if you can't get 3% off a million-dollar deal, you're in the wrong business.
Yeah, that's a vendor telling you something, then. Go to another vendor, then.
Okay, but even under that scenario, we have another board meeting before the date you indicated, right?
We do.
Okay.
February 26. Okay, so the motion's on the table. A yes vote is to postpone and no vote is to proceed as planned. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
No.
Trustee Hightman?
No.
Clerk Vorba?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Treasurer Dempsey, I mean, trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so basically, we are now in a kind of a study session format on this issue for tonight. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me on this mic?
Yeah, just lean into this one for some reason.
Yeah, you have to be really close to this one or you can't hear anybody. So tonight, we're here to discuss vehicle acquisition of a 2019 vehicle. Years ago, we have, we had a heavy equipment replacement schedule. This is the heavy equipment replacement schedule that was completed by this township in the early 2000s, shortly after the purchase of our ambulances. We have purchased a replacement for the 1989 pumper that is due to come in this year. Actual replacement time is 2019. Today, we are talking about replacing the 1992 pumper, which was planned to be replaced in 2012. Again, just a little bit of history. The 89 pumper has been in service for 30 years. As of right now, if this vehicle is not to be used by Plymouth Township, we cannot sell it to anybody else. Nobody else will buy it. No vendors will buy it. They said our best course of action is to sell it for scrap or sell it to like an apple orchard or somebody who wants to drive kids around in something that looks like a fire truck. This truck does not meet any NFPA standards. It is, the tank is rusted through, I mean, we've talked about this truck. This truck needs to be replaced. This truck will be placed in reserve when the new vehicle arrives, hopefully in April. The next truck, the one we are talking about replacing tonight, is a 1992 pumper. That truck has been in service for 27 years, has a lot of the same issues, which I have spoken of. You can see here, I tried to put it in black so it would show up better for everybody, but apparently it doesn't look much better. But we, we've talked about this. It has a rusted undercarriage, has no ABS brakes. It doesn't meet current standards. And on top of that, Engine 3, the truck we are discussing, has not functioned for the last 30 days. It has not worked. In, since October, it has only been in service about a little over 30 days. They do not make parts for this truck. Every time it breaks, parts have to be custom-made. So we need to replace this vehicle. If we don't get this vehicle replaced soon, we're going to be down to, some days, we're down to one fire truck working. Some days, we've been down to zero fire trucks working. Our intention is to purchase a Quint, a 107-foot ladder truck on a single axle. I use the word Quint and here's the definition. A Quint serves five purposes. It is a dual-purpose engine and a ladder truck. The name Quint is derived from a Latin word. I'll let the lawyer say it. But it basically says that it has a fire pump, it has a water tank, it carries fire hose, it has an aerial device and carries ground ladders. We think that this would be the perfect truck for Plymouth Township. This particular truck is built on the same chassis as the vehicle we purchased last year. It has a 2,000 gallon per minute fire pump versus the 1,250 gallon pump it would be replacing. Carries 500 gallons of water. Comes with a 35-foot three-section ladder, 24-foot two-section ladder, two 16-foot ladders, a 10-foot ladder, most importantly, 100-foot vehicle-mounted ladder and a 1,500 gallon per minute waterway to deliver water to the seat of a fire. There's some warranties this truck comes with. I know previous board members have asked for this. The engine has a five-year warranty. The frame comes with a 50-year warranty. The structure of the aerial itself is a 20-year warranty. All of this is detailed on page 14 of the bid proposal you received. Why does Plymouth Township need an aerial ladder? Why is it so important that we have one? Why can't we just do what we've done for the last few years and borrow our neighbors? Hey, it's great. We'll just take our neighbor's truck. Well, we have a lot of structures in Plymouth Township that are 35 feet or higher. We have a significant need for a vehicle like this in this community. This right here is not a complete list of all of these buildings. This is just some notable structures that are 35 feet higher. Plymouth Independence Village, Northville Road, Bosch, both Phase 1 and 2, Burrows Building, St. John Seminary, Hilton Garden Inn, Holiday Inn Express, Comfort Inn. Orlacan is a 64-foot building that we just approved. 1-800-SOUTHSTORAGE, right here on Ann Arbor Road. Troy Manufacturing Design, which is the old Sheldon Road plant. The Ravines of Plymouth, that is the townhouse style buildings across from the Courthouse Grill. They are three to four stories total. Mostly three with their roofs. 1275 Ann Arbor Road, I don't know the name of them. They're four-story townhouse-style apartments on Ann Arbor Road right next to the Red Olive. LA Fitness, Northridge Church, the advioced building on Polaris Court, the Orion Center on Pilot Drive, Mobus North America, St. Kenneth's Church, Adian. Again, not a complete list. All of these buildings are 35 feet or taller. All of these buildings, we do not have access to the roofs. We do not have access to multiple stories. In early 2016, Plymouth Township reviewed the truck we're looking at buying. This is a picture of the truck from Roseville. Roseville purchased one of these trucks, a Quint, and we asked to bring it here to see if it would fit our needs. This is that truck at the Bosch facility. As you can see, it meets the needs of this facility. This is the same truck at St. John's Seminary. We're showing that it can't necessarily get to the roof, but it can get to the top floor. We also have another view showing it to get to the penthouse suite up there, to the balcony, so we could get people out. In comparison, sitting next to that, you'll see a little red arrow and you'll see a ladder. That is the tallest ladder Plymouth Township had at the time to get people out of the building or to get on a roof to put out a fire or to get it on a roof to cut a hole to let heat out to make it safer for firefighters to enter. That's the tallest ladder we have in Plymouth Township. As you can see, it is not appropriate for that building or any of the other buildings I just told you about. That ladder won't get to the top of LA Fitness. That ladder won't get to the roof of this building. Holiday Inn Express, that was brand-new at the time. We brought that ladder in to look at that, just to make sure it would meet our needs. Independence Village on Northville Road, we also set it up there to show that it would provide fire suppression and rescue in that facility as well. Plymouth Township has a taxable value that is, the commercial and manufacturing properties provide 30% of the township's taxable value. That's 30%. And we do not provide them with adequate fire protection. They pay 30% of our taxes, but we don't provide them with the equipment that they need to make themselves feel safe in this community. In this picture right here, I'm showing you the Metro West Corporate Park. There's a lot of buildings in there. It starts over here at Sheldon Road and you can see Beck Road over there, five miles to the top and M14 on the bottom. It actually extends a little bit farther. These are all industrial buildings that would require a vehicle such as this, which is why we felt, we felt it was appropriate for us to not only protect our residents, but also our business owners.
Can you explain a little more why you need a vehicle like this to protect those buildings?
Yes. Most of these buildings, their furnaces, their air conditioners, their stuff are on the roof. If they catch fire, it's good for us to be able to get up there quick and extinguish that fire before it gets too big. That's one issue. Another issue is that fire can be up in the plant somewhere that we can't get to easily. We need to get firemen on the roof quickly to let that heat and smoke out so our firemen can make an entrance into the building to then put out the fire. If we allow that heat and that smoke to continue to grow in there, when we put firemen in the front door, that heat's going to melt that steel and it's going to collapse on our firefighters, which would be a tragedy. It's a tragedy that we can avoid. With a truck like this, we can get on the roof, we can get, open up the roof, we can get that heat out of there quickly so that we can protect that structure.
When was the last time that we had a working ladder truck?
I was going to get to that, but in, the last time we had a ladder truck was 2012.
A, a working one?
Correct.
Between 2012 and now, have there been any fires in any of these buildings or that you've
Many.
And how did you suppress them?
We did our best to do other things to suppress them.
Do we have, do we have an agreement called the Automatic Fire Mutual Aid Response Protocol that you signed?
We have an agreement with the City of Northville Fire Department to bring their ladder truck, which is located in the city of Plymouth.
And have they ever denied the use of that?
No, but their truck, we have found, has broken down a lot on fires and we don't trust it.
How many, could you please articulate what those fires were and provide that to the board?
The Amelia Fire, which was was the last time that that truck failed on a scene. Prior to that, that truck failed at the Transformer Fire. I'm sure you all guys all remember the big Transformer Fire in the city of Plymouth. That truck failed at that.
Did you, do we have mutual aid with Livonia and Canton and Northville Township?
We do.
Did you call those?
We did.
Did they respond?
Uh, yes, they did.
Okay.
And last year, how much mutual aid did we give those communities versus receive from those communities? I'm, I'm thinking back to the kinds of numbers that are provided to us monthly.
Yep.
And we give a hell of a lot more than we receive.
In, in medicals, yes, we do.
In medicals, not in fires?
Yes.
It's all the same agreement.
However, with that being said, the, on the Sheffield Fire on January 1st, it took Canton 30 minutes to arrive on scene.
Yeah.
This has been a thing that we've seen consistently, is that it takes them a long time to get that big truck from farther away to our scenes. In that time period, what happens is our fire trucks are in front of them and they can't make an effective fire attack.
The city of Plymouth is located in the center of the, of the, of our community.
That's correct. The city of Plymouth, they come from home, they go and they pick up the truck, and they bring it to the scene. And typically, the, the truck is not in an advantageous position to attack the fire.
Whose responsibility is that to coordinate that?
The city of Plymouth, or the city of Northville. I can't, I can't be responsible for their personnel.
Who's in command when the, when the, when you go to a fire?
In Plymouth Township, Plymouth Township.
But you can't tell them to bring their truck and hurry up?
No, but when they get there, when you're trying to situate it, you would be in command, correct?
In, in our agreement with them, their first truck they bring is their tower truck.
With the bucket on it?
Yep. And that's, they have a tower truck. We are asking to buy a ladder truck.
And a tower truck actually would be better for taking old people out of the Independence Village on the, on the top floor, as opposed to a stick truck, right?
I would disagree vehemently. And the reason why is because every time you have to bring that ladder up and down, it takes a lot of time.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get a ninety-year-old person to climb down a stick?
We would carry them down. But we can only put so much weight in a bucket truck.
You can only do that one at a time, though. Only one person could be on the stick at a time.
Actually, only a few people could be in the bucket truck as it goes up and down. That takes considerable time. It's quicker for us to have a fireman go up, get somebody, carry them down, another fireman up, carry somebody down. It's more advantageous to rescue people out of a vehicle like this because of the quick setup and the ability to move it quicker than in a conventional power truck.
Chief, how long does a truck like this normally last? What's the average life expectancy?
When we purchased ours in 1971, we kept it till around 2000. So, I would say about twenty-five years is what we should expect from this next truck.
Okay. And I will just let you know that we have spent years, this, the township government has, working with Northville on the, the DeHoco Project, which is now the MITC Redevelopment Authority. That is a thirty-year plan that would take, and that's not even, it's barely on your map here, but the, the entire DeHoco property going from back all the way to Napier, I think on our side alone is something in the neighborhood of three hundred acres. And that's gonna be developed in a very similar manner as to all of these buildings that exist here. I think you're looking at pretty much a carbon copy of what we've got. Same structures, probably, you know, four-story or thereabouts. We've also updated our PUD ordinance so that we can allow for a more, an operation like a hotel or a nursing facility, a senior living facility. I think that, what's the new Courthouse Grill site? Is that four stories?
That's right there. That's the picture of it.
I mean, and I, and I, and I just hold.
That's four stories with a basement underneath for automobiles.
And I've been approached already by other, other developers who are looking for similar units, whether that be hotels, or apartments, or senior living facilities.
See, what I, what I would like to see, a wish, would be if there was kind of a regional plan. So like, the chiefs got together for, in the surrounding communities and said, "Here's all the stuff that we need to make ourselves whole in this region." You know, "You guys get, have, get a, have a new ladder truck. You guys have a new whatever."
We have attempted to write two grants. If you recall, you were on the board when we signed an agreement with Novi and Northville. We did not, we were not successful in that.
But in that, but in that, in that instance, though, chief, you would have been happy to share a stick truck, right? Because it would have been located someplace.
In the fact, well, it would have been located here, in Plymouth Township. That was part of the agreement, and.
But, but then if they needed it, you would send it all the way to Novi?
We would, but we would also benefit from somebody else paying for it as well.
But then it wouldn't be here. It'd be in Novi, correct?
Well, it might be a little further.
That's what I'm saying.
But you know what I'm saying. It's like, no, no one of the fire department in this region can, can have everything that, you know, we might possibly need, right? I guess.
Well, there's Western, Western Way Mutual Aid has been around decades. You know that.
But is there a plan?
Yeah, of course there is. But we don't always get what we want when we need it, and, under our, under our control, and things don't always work the way that they're supposed to.
See, I'm in agreement, we need another pumper. We need another engine. I'm just not sure that we need to spend an extra $300,000 for something that is close to us in the surrounding communities. I, I, I wanna be clear that, that, that I'm in support of us getting the kind of equipment that's going to, to work for us, but at the same time, to not over-duplicate, so that we're buying stuff just to buy it when, when we have access immediately to those same things from Livonia, from Plymouth.
It's not immediate. It's not immediate.
It's immediate enough.
No, it's not. It's thirty minutes. This is a fire we're talking about.
And how many?
And if you wanna tell the citizens of this township that for $300,000, we don't have this truck, and, oh, by the way, I hope the hell Plymouth City isn't using theirs or Northville, or somebody else isn't using theirs, that's, that's fine. You tell them that. I'm not telling them that.
I don't think five communities are gonna have those kind of fires all at the same time, and so.
How do we know?
Because.
You tell them.
History tells me that that's the case. And my, my issue is that, that we should be sharing services and sharing equipment so that we provide good service at the proper cost. Because this extra $300,000 could, in effect, buy another ambulance.
It could.
We don't need another ambulance.
Well, you're talking, well, we're gonna have a discussion in March about, about transporting, so we're having.
We don't need another ambulance to transport.
You're going to replace one, then this would be the money for it.
We've already bought it.
There's gonna be another, another purchase on, on, on our supposed schedule.
Mark, is this $300,000 in the budget?
There is no budget.
Wait, we have a capital plan.
That's not.
We have a capital plan based on the millage that these people just voted for.
And that's for OPEB and for pensions.
Wait, I asked Mark the question. Mark?
So, when I, when I calculated what we would need for the millage, which I calculated to be 1.2 mills through the years 2035, I worked with Chief Phillips on a capital appropriation plan, and this pumper, this Quint, was in that plan.
It was in the plan.
The plan was to finance it over ten years at roughly $100,000 to $150,000 to $120,000 a year. Yep.
So, is, is Pierce the manufacturer, and Haltfire is the distributor?
That is correct.
So, Haltfire is trying to, I, I, I do not like when a vendor says, "You must sign," or "We're gonna take away our discount." I would go find another vendor.
This is not Haltfire. This is, Pierce has annually, every February, they have a three percent price increase. They always warn us about it. They always let us know. We felt that it was appropriate to bring it to the board before their annual price increase.
With, with fourteen days to spare.
Rosevower has a similar price increase, Sopin, other, other vendors as well.
The, I, I wanna thank the treasurer for his outstanding work on the, on the millage, and also on his, his layout of, 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 that's a nice plan. However, there's no budgeted money for that, and that we have not voted on it. It is not in a budget, and that could change at any time. But your work is very well done. I appreciate it. And my concern is that we're duplicating something that we don't need. And I'm, I was in favor of the millage. I just had cancer surgery, aggressive cancer surgery, and I was out there walking while I was recovering for can, from cancer surgery to, to, to make sure that we had the money necessary for our fire department and public safety. So, there's not another person on this board that thinks it's not important, more important than I do. What I'm concerned is, is that when we came here, we talked about sharing services, and the cost of police departments and fire departments are extremely high. It's the, it's the most money we spend. And I have been talking for the past forty years, since I was a young policeman in the city of Plymouth, about how we need to share services in order to better to, to supply the kind of services that are necessary for the public at the proper cost. And I'm never gonna change that. I support the fire department. I support the police department. But I don't wanna buy something and duplicate it. And we just passed this, and now it looks like the money's burning a hole in our pocket, you know? And I just don't think it's the, the, the right time to do this. We have a budget coming up. We have discussion on, 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 on ambulance service. We don't, we haven't done the contract yet with the fire department. We still don't know what that cost is going to be. And I think it's a little premature to do that without having that other stuff under our belt.
Well, I think, I, I guess, my thoughts, and, and obviously, this is a contentious issue because people have strong feelings both ways. We, you know, we, we did plan for this from a financial perspective. I think that's the, the first important thing. Second thing is, I don't think, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I get the impression that nobody disagrees that we need a new fire truck. We need a new fire truck. The, the question really becomes, do we need a ladder on that fire truck? Do we need to spend an extra $270,000 to put a ladder on a fire truck? One, one, one thought is that, no, because we can rely on mutual aid to get that. Okay, that's a question. Is mutual aid good enough? The other one comes down to the risk, right? What is the risk of not having a ladder truck? It becomes an insurance policy. And what's the cost of not having a ladder truck? Do I wanna be the person who is responsible for a building burning up or people getting trapped on the top floor because I didn't wanna spend $30,000 a year for the next ten years? I'm not sure I wanna be that person. I, you know, and, and Jerry, I appreciate what you're saying. I think in a perfect world, cooperation between communities would be a great thing. We haven't had great success doing that. I think, you know, historically, we look at our relationship with the city of Plymouth. That didn't go well. Even sharing a, a, you know, Fire Station Two with Northville Township, that didn't go particularly well. That should have been an easy one from a partnership perspective, and that didn't go very well. We even couldn't agree on how to share Little League fields today between Canton and Plymouth. So, I agree. I think that a, a perfect goal would be to have mutual cooperation with all those communities. In reality, they just, hasn't seemed to work all that well.
That doesn't mean that we stop trying. And, and the fact that the thing didn't work with the, the two bulk things here, they didn't talk to each other. One approached us, and the other one didn't know about it. So, that's no excuse for us to not continue to try to be good neighbors and to work collectively as a region for these kind of really expensive police departments and fire departments are the, the majority of the budget in every single, every single community.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I, I do have a question.
Can we go on with the, the show here? I mean, are you done, or?
I mean, yeah.
All right. I mean, I mean, I, I'm sorry, but regional cooperation for police and fire has been talked about in southeast Michigan for fifty years, and it never happens, okay?
Never gonna stop talking about it.
Okay, and it's, you can, you can, you will never stop talking about it, but I'm not, I don't think it should hold up a common sense modernization of this department that puts us on par with our, our competitors and our comparables. And, yes, yes, we are. Oh, yes, we are. On economic development, on housing, on quality of life, on insurance that, that our residents pay, we are absolutely in competition.
I'm begging companies to come to this township, and I'm gonna tell them, "Sorry, you can't build more than thirty feet." Come on. Wait, there's a, there's a pumper down the street, and I hope the hell we can get here in time.
It did stop Orlakon to build a sixty.
I'm gonna put a big, hey, I, I want you to put a big factory at the corner of Five Mile and Napier. And, you know, if it burns up, well, so hopefully, somebody from Plymouth City will be out there in a half an hour.
Then a hundred-foot ladder truck is not nearly long enough.
So, so make your $45 million investment. Make your $45 million investment, and maybe I'll, I'll have, I'll be able to put it out.
So, a hundred foot is not nearly long enough, 'cause you got, you're from the screen.
I'm not, you, you know the point that I'm making here, okay?
One of the things I'd like to touch on really briefly is.
You're haggling over $30,000 a year.
The board is looking at the use of one ladder truck at a fire.
This money is going out the window.
Oh, Bob, come on.
One after another.
Oh, my goodness.
And then it's gonna be more people.
Oh, my goodness.
And it's gonna be transports. It's gonna be one thing after another.
Oh, my goodness. We're gonna have a modern police and fire department.
No, it's not modern.
The horror.
Jerry's right. The money's burning a hole in your pocket.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, continue.
Pardon the pun. No, let's move on.
Well, but, no, but. One of the things I would like to talk about is the board right now seems to be looking at the use of one ladder truck at a fire. If we have a substantial fire, there's going to be more than one ladder truck that's going to be set up at that fire. This is not just gonna be a one ladder. If you look at the fire that Inkster had last week, the week before, in the strip mall, I believe there's three aerial trucks there. So, this is something that, just because we don't provide it, I'm not, I, I believe we need to still. Because even if you do get mutual aid from another community for one aerial truck, doesn't mean that's all you need.
My question, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a compromise here. Truck number one costs roughly $650,000. Truck number two with a ladder costs roughly $950,000. Is there a smaller version that could be truck three? In the $400,000 range, which is, you know, which would save us some money, but still give us a new truck and new capability?
I can't promise you the price because we're still working on it. But yes, the truck that we intend on in a couple of years, looking for in the Station Two area, we want to be a smaller truck, because if you look at the demographics of that area, it's smaller roads, smaller biz, buildings. We need a truck that can get through those. We don't want a big truck like this. This truck at Fire Station Three serves a huge industrial and commercial area. It serves an area where you have five to six thousand square feet homes in it. Station Two has an area where you have fifteen hundred, twelve hundred square foot homes. So, yes, the truck that we are still in the process for Station Two's area would be much smaller than the truck that we would put in Station Three's area. It's also different than the truck that we put in Station One's area, because Station One's service area has a different demographic than Station Three and Station Two. So, let, I, I'm, I'm still gonna talk about some of the new construction. None of these buildings here are built right now, but as you can see, these are two four-story buildings going up at the Courthouse Grill. This board has already approved the concept of these buildings. We need a truck like this to be able to protect the residents who live in this building, these buildings. The Backroad Hotel is still in the concept stage. Easy Storage on Sheldon Road is another one in the concept stage.
Is that the one wedged between the freeway?
Yes, the freeway and the train track. Northridge Church has, for years and years, and I don't know where they're at, talked about adding a Phase Three. Bosch is talking about Phase Three. Again, they've talked about them. I don't know where they are. So, these are other processes that are still under development.
Well, we're also still trying to market the, the Steak and Ale Site as a hotel. I mean, it's, it's a great location, and basically, what you see them building in Livonia now, at the old sports bar there, if you've seen the drawings of it.
Yeah, Dax.
That's, that's exactly what they were gonna build here, so. But that's not a, we didn't lose that because of anything. We did. It was a dispute really between the developer and the, and the property owner.
Well, I, I think we should move on. We, we've, we've had a discussion. It's obviously very contentious, which is a really good reason that we're postponing it, 'cause it'll give people time to think a little bit, and we'll talk about it the next.
I don't think the chief is done yet.
Do you want me to stop my?
No, I don't want you to stop.
Okay, the uses of this vehicle are more than just firefighting. One is fire attack. Another is elevated lights on nighttime incidents. We are on M-14 Expressway. We are on 275 at night, a lot. We need to light up these scenes to make them safe for ourselves. Elevated rescues, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later. Below-grade rescues. We have rescued several construction workers who've fallen in pits and buildings. We would use a tower like this to lift them out. Elevated water streams, blitz attacks on fires on multiple stories before firefighters even enter the building. Police incidents. Subway, Subway at Five Mile and Sheldon, we laddered, we attempted to ladder the building to let the police up there to capture a suspect. Search and rescue. Additional resource to send our neighbors when they need help from us. The picture you see here is a fire that happened this year on Sheffield Court. The aerial truck you see in that picture is a seventy-five-foot stick provided by Northville Township. While effective in a lot of ways, that. While effective in a lot of ways, that vehicle was not able to even make it to the house to put out the fire at 75 feet. We need 100 foot to be able to get to that house to put, in this case, we would have never put anybody on the roof, but to direct that water stream to put that fire out. We were out there for hours trying to do it other ways because, as you can see, that the front of that house was protecting the fire from that aerial device. So zoning ordinances, we also need to talk about. The zoning ordinance allows buildings to 35 feet in most districts, including residential. In many of our industrial districts, we allow up to 45 feet. We can't get on those, provided greater setbacks are given. I got all this from our planning Laura. The Ann Arbor Road District buildings can be 38 feet after consideration by the planning department. We also have two mid-rise districts, which allows up to nine stories for a maximum of 90 feet. Those districts are on Selective Drive and on Northville Road where Independence are. There are no nine-story buildings, but according to our planner, they're allowed in those areas. So we are trying to plan for the future, for future development. This purchase was anticipated in Plan Four during the 2018 Millage campaign. This purchase would replace the 1992 fire engine at Fire Station Three. This purchase would increase our ability to protect our commercial industrial districts, enhancing our economic development. This purchase would increase our rating as determined by the insurance service offices, lowering insurance rates for township residents. The insurance service offices says we should have a ladder truck at Fire Station Three. That was in the packet that I put up to you. We are trying to follow what the national standards recommend for our community so that we can get better insurance rates for our residents. This vehicle would reduce our vehicle maintenance costs just because our trucks are so darn old. And our firefighters would be able to train properly on a ladder. Currently, we cannot borrow our neighbors' aerial devices for training. I have called them and said, "Hey, can we come get your ladder so we can train it?" And their answer was, "Well, we can arrange something where we bring it out and we supervise you." But again, that doesn't help our personnel learn how to access this. So we are, every time we ask for aerial from somebody else, we're just going to have to rely on them to perform all of the aerial duties because I don't even have the staff currently trained to be able to do that. Pricing for this truck is $970,000. There was a discount from Mitten, the purchasing agreement of $60,000. Purchasing through Mitten qualifies under the township's bidding standards. Total prepayment financed would be $935,119. That's actually not correct. There's also a prepayment amount. It comes out tonight, 37, which is in your packets. If financed through Pierce Financial, it would be $118,977 per year. The first payment would be due one year after signing the agreement. Mark and I have, or Treasurer Clinton and I have worked, and he has looked at other financing options, one of them being Bank of Ann Arbor. That appears to be much more favorable. I'll let him speak on that.
They're all in the same neighborhood, and I think Bank of Ann Arbor was roughly $114,000 a month. The other one was roughly $115,000. So they're, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. So you're in that, you know, 113 to 118, 119 range. It's not a significant difference, but it is a difference.
Thank you. I imagine all your questions are done, or does anybody have any more questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
My only question is, you know, when we're considering mutual aid, the ladder trucks that we're relying on, how old are those?
So the Northville Township is the oldest around, and that one was just refurbished. But that's a 75-foot ladder, so we found in practice that it doesn't really work really well for our buildings. One of the issues that I haven't talked about yet is setbacks. In Plymouth Township, we allow up to a 45-foot setback off the road in some areas. We have between 25 and 45 feet. When you have a 75-foot ladder and a 45-foot setback, you lose 45 feet off of that 75 feet. You literally only have a 30-foot ladder at that point. So with 100-foot aerial, we still have 55 feet to hit most of our residential structure. We are not going to hit them all, but this provides the best risk-benefit analysis to provide the best to our residents, our commercial structures, and our industrial structures.
So you've become a politician because you never answered my question. How old is the Northville Township?
The city of Plymouth purchased theirs, it was a demo unit used in 2014. I skipped a slide. I already talked about the history. We attempted to purchase the city's tower when they bought their new one. Supervisor price was still here. They asked for way too much. The value of that vehicle was about $12,000. They wanted about $24,000 to $25,000, which was, everybody we asked was like, "There's no way you should pay that for it." We, at one point, had two aerials here. We had the 1971 and the 1980 tower from the city during the merger. We had two aerials in the township.
So currently, we have three fire engines. And one is from 1989.
Yep.
One is from 1992.
Yep.
And the third one is from?
2000.
2000. So we are already replacing the oldest one. And that is paid for with the grant money that we got from the state and the proceeds of the sale of the easement for the cell tower at the DPW building. So this machine would come from the Millage, which was approved by the voters, '57, '43. And then the third fire engine, what is your anticipated long-term replacement plan for that vehicle?
In our original analysis of this, we decided we would look at that at about, we'll probably ask the board to purchase it late 2021 for arrival in 2022. That's, 2022 is when we anticipated having to pay for it.
And our new ambulance is on order and should be arriving?
In a few months, yes.
Okay.
The buildings that you were talking about in the industrial area and like Independence Village, do they have fire suppression systems in them?
Some of them do. Not all of them on my list do. Like the Ford Motor Company does not in the offices in the front.
How many people have died over the past 20 years in those buildings because of fire?
In 20 years? In the last 20 years? In those buildings? None. Because of, wait.
And if there's one, that's too damn many. Come on, you know, how many have died?
So what's the number in Northville and Livonia and Canton? Okay, I mean, I.
You tell the citizens that, you know, you're betting that nothing's going to happen. I'm not telling them.
This particular picture up here that's up on the screen right now, it's hard to see, but I don't know the name of the business now, but it was the old Broder Brothers on Port Street, or, yeah, Port Street, at the Eastern Underport. This was a rescue where a guy went up in a high-low to pick some parts. He then knocked over every part rack that was in there, and it came down like dominoes. At this rescue, we had to go in there and actually get up to the roof, cut a hole in the roof, and rescue him from an upper elevated type rescue. This was not a fire, but this was something that had to be done in that particular manner. And we needed an aerial device to do that.
Did you not save him?
Yes, we did save him.
We had a massive gas explosion in Macomb County during the recent cold wave. We have similar gas transfer and pumping and piping facilities in Plymouth Township. If something like that were to blow up here, would this kind of apparatus be helpful in that kind of a situation?
Absolutely. I mean, that would be fought as a defensive type fire from an aerial manner. One thing that goes along with this truck is having it in our fleet, more than calling for mutual aid, is this truck would be more as a forethought for placement on a fire rather than a second or a third thought. What ends up happening is, right now, when we start firefighting, we set up the house with our engines and stuff in front of it. We then lay our five-inch supply lines from the hydrant to our engine. If this was our vehicle, that vehicle would already be in place, in theory, to go to a defensive type firefighting mode already. I wouldn't have to disconnect trucks, move trucks, to get this piece of apparatus in place. That's why I think it's pretty important.
And so if it's at Beck Road, where you plan on putting it, and there's a train?
There's a Beck Road and there's a train blocking the track, are you going to not call Northville to take care of that?
I'm not saying that, but if I'm planning on that truck being there, I'm going to plan on that truck being there. I may not necessarily need to call Northville for theirs.
There's a train, and you're not going to call Northville?
I don't want to get into an argument with you about this, but we have ways around the train tracks here at Plymouth Township.
But you talked about speed, and so Northville would be right.
But they will be here within, before 30 minutes like Canton was.
Okay, I'm going to leave you guys up there because I want to know if there's any questions or comments from the audience.
Before there is, maybe I could pipe in.
Certainly, sir.
Maybe I look like a potted plant, but.
Just jump in. The water's fine.
Angels fear to tread sometimes.
Don't say anything not agreeable.
So I do think this was helpful to have it as a discussion and not a vote because I can't imagine how emotional it would be if we were voting tonight. But I've looked at this material. I've looked at the facts. I've listened to the questions. I'm going to be voting yes. So just thought everybody should know that.
Okay, are you all set, Jack? I don't want to.
That was enough.
That was enough. Okay, good. Brevity. Susan Bondi.
Susan Bondi from the township. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Usually I'm loud enough. You did ask, you know, one of the questions you did ask is about the different, the age of some of the surrounding fire trucks, their ladder trucks. The city's is either 2014 or 15. Canton's is a 2010. So, okay. And that's only, and then Northville is a, has a 75-foot ladder, and that is a 2002. Okay? So, you know, when you start talking, one of the recommendations from the Public Safety Committee was that we create a five-to-10-year purchase plan because we had decimated our fire engines so badly, okay? They were in dire need. We all know we need a truck. Do we need a ladder truck, okay? I say yes. Yes, we do need a ladder truck. Because, again, even if you look at a regional plan, you can see that these trucks are all going to be four to five years apart, okay? So, you know, in a way, we would be doing our part to, you know, basically create a regional purchase plan for a ladder truck. And ladder trucks are not all needed for fires. We had an instance that, I don't remember, it's all over 10 years ago now, where a man had to be rescued from the roof of a house in Lake Point. Lake Point. That isn't a really big high house, okay? But he was a heavyset man on the roof, fell through, and the only way to access him and to help him get off that roof was via a ladder truck. Okay? So ladder trucks are not only needed for fires, and, you know, I recommend that you think about that. We cannot count on the city of Northville. They are an on-call fire department. That means, of course, that they're going to double or triple the time to the scene. And that double or triple time can be detrimental to everyone involved. So, you know, I really think that we have to think about all of those issues. And as far as buying the, you know, spending the extra $300,000 for a ladder truck, I think it's an absolute must.
You bring up an interesting point, too, Susan, is these other communities are also in economic development. Northville has got Hagerty Road complete with every senior facility in the world. And guess what? All of them are higher than 35 feet. And Canton is building, everybody's been, we're out, Five Mile, we're building everything on both sides of the road. So you're right.
That was the other thing I was going to point out, is that we continue, we know we're going to have more building out toward that area. And at the cost of building, people aren't going to build out. They're going to build up.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else on this particular item? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Youssef. I live over in Cambridge.
What's your last name, Youssef?
Tegazi.
Okay.
I voted for the safety millage specifically to replace the fire trucks. And I work for a contract inspection company that works in one of these buildings, the Adient Building. And I don't want to rely on another city's truck that may or may not be reliable or in the area when I am working on site. And even if my coworkers and I are not on site at that location, the potential damage for waiting for another city's truck could mean loss of business for us because their, Adient is a big, one of our biggest customers. So that loss would be really detrimental to us.
Thank you.
Any relation to Selma?
Yes.
I thought so.
I'm her grandson.
How wonderful. She was a wonderful person, and I ate many, many doughnuts at Dr. Donut's.
You're a former cop, right?
Yes, of course.
Selma and her family are wonderful people, and so I enjoyed it for many years.
Did you know the Jabar family?
Yes, I sure do. Yes. I think all of us do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this item?
Yep, we got more here.
Hi, my name is Ivy Coleman. I just had a couple things I was thinking about when you were talking about the truck. First of all, the essence is timing, probably with fires. So what is the speed difference in having it? Obviously, it would be faster. And number one priority is safety. So, but then my other thing I was thinking about when you were talking about is you have a residence versus business. So is this a fire engine for residences or is it for businesses? Or both?
This is for both, and it also makes it, and I didn't talk on this, and I will to help answer your question. This ladder truck on a residence provides a more stable platform than putting a ladder on your building itself. If the building was to collapse, this ladder's not going to fall in. My firefighters are safe. The ladder's sitting on your house. If it was to collapse, that wall was collapsed, my firemen are going to be inside the fire. So it does provide better fire protection for my firefighters operating at your house and allows us, again, open up those roofs quicker to get that heat and smoke out so the firemen can go inside and put the fire out.
Yeah, so when I was just listening to you, I just thought, a lot of the use of this fire engine is for businesses because now we're developing the township, right? Perhaps they could offset some of the costs then. You know, maybe you could not have just the residences pay for something that's going to be used disproportionately from businesses. That was just my thought.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on this issue? You want to come forward?
Hi, I'm Craig Gerber. Actually, wasn't here for this purpose at all, but I thought it was pretty interesting. Mainly, I think, I'm in favor, to be honest, but I think we heard that we typically are planning for like 25 years of life out of these. But we also heard that the Northville truck is not reliable, and that's. truck is not reliable and that's only from what I hear, 16-years-old. Just want to make sure we're considering that in our maintenance costs and plans and also think about what vendor made that. If, if it's losing its useful life at roughly, you know, 70, 60% of the expected life, let's just make sure we're spending it correctly, but other than that, I'm, I'm all for it.
To answer your question, this vendor did not make any of those other trucks. We did look at those vendors and because of some of the other issues we had, we chose to go with this vendor. We've always had good luck with them.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue?
I'm curious, when you said that the, the one truck basically scrap value, I, I know some people up in Benzey County that few years ago, they sold a pumper that ended up sitting on 115 for a while. Shortly thereafter, the new one, the pump went bad. They actually went back and had to pay the guy that bought their wrecked machine more to pull the pump off. Is, is there any value more than scrap? Is there something, any of the equipment that's there, is it still worth trying to do anything or?
Most of the equipment on that truck will be transferred over to the new truck. Almost everything except for the stuff that came with the truck when it was made, meaning the pump, the engine, the transmission, the axle. The last truck of this design with the open cab that the vendor bought from as part of the sale, they ended up selling to a apple orchard. And he, in this case, told me he's not interested in doing that again. He's not going to make any money. He said, "You can do it." I, there's a, there's a campground on, by Mackinac Island that buys fire trucks and they give kids rides. We could, we could look and see if they're interested in it, but again, we're probably, especially with the aluminum and steel tariffs right now, the scrap value may be the highest amount we get. The resale value of this truck's probably five grand. I think we could do better in scrap, to be honest with you. But I, I don't know exactly.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Anyone else on this issue? All right.
I have a question. On the fire that was on Brownell Street, a little garage fire, are you folks calling for mutual aid?
We did.
Is that because the pumper wasn't working?
Actually, no. On all fires in the township, we have an automatic aid agreement with the city of Northville. So they came and the, and just part of our automatic box alarm, we call for automatic aid from the city of Northville and one other fire department, be it Canton, be it Northville, be it Livonia. Just because we don't staff enough personnel to fight a typical fire. Now, in that fire, yes, the pump did not stop working. That was engine one, but it was, it was corrected on the scene very quickly. It was, it was a bad sensor. So all we had to do is change the mode of the truck and the truck pumped flawlessly the rest of the fire.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you at a future meeting. Maybe, maybe not. Okay. Next item is item F5. This is our annual, I'm being facetious. It is time for us to once again ask our representatives in Lansing and Wayne County and thank you, Commissioner, for sticking with us here tonight. But this is really more of a state issue than anything else and it deals with the intersection at McLumpha and Ann Arbor Road. Bob, you want to put that up on the screen?
I had it up on the screen. I don't know what, I don't know what got changed.
Did the light go off? Can we have to do, okay, all right. Anyway, it's no secret that the intersection at McLumpha and Ann Arbor Road has been a hazard for many, many years. In 2015, we, I was able to get a study with Wayne County to investigate traffic at the intersection and possible remedies. What's unusual about Ann Arbor Road is that it is under the control of MDOT. It is the old M14. And so therefore, even though you will see Wayne County crews doing maintenance on Ann Arbor Road, we hope that they are, it is still a state road. So the installation of any kinds of traffic signals or other enhancements or improvements to the intersection is the responsibility of MDOT. In 2017, former state rep Jeff Noble was able to secure funding from the state to begin work on the intersection. Unfortunately, that only resulted as a, in a widening and not even a, not even a really good widening either, kind of they nibbled off the edges a little bit. Some would argue that they made it more dangerous by allowing more flow to go through there and maybe literally allowing people to cut corners better than they were able to in the past. So the situation there is still very bad. What we are asking for from the state is for a three-way red, yellow, green traffic signal at all four corners of the intersection to provide a higher degree of safety for residents, for pedestrians and for drivers. Obviously, the, the high schools are right down the street and there is a ton of traffic there in the mornings and in the afternoons. A lot of that traffic are young people who are not good, the greatest drivers in the world. And sometimes at, at times of day, trying to get across the street is impossible. Trying to make left-hand turns from McLumpha onto westbound Ann Arbor Road is suicidal. I, I don't know, I, I've never, I don't think I've ever pulled it off. So anyway, with a, a whole new crew of people in Lansing, we have a new state rep, a new state senator, a new governor, new MDOT director, new leadership in, in the House and Senate. This is our, our annual plea to the state to do something about this intersection, spend the money and make this a proper three-way traffic signal, four-way at the intersection.
Jim Vermillion's had kids still cut through the funeral.
Sure.
Funeral.
Lots of people do.
And it's amazing.
If, if they entertain this and maybe we make it part of the resolution, what I would request is that they, they look at whether it would be possible to synchronize that light with Beck and Sheldon because that, what happens in some of the communities when, when the congestion is because of the lights are not timed.
They force the congestion.
And then it creates a further hazard because people know the lights are not timed, so they'll, that you can have, you can have a detrimental impact.
No, absolutely.
So I'm going to ask them to try to time these lights together.
Good idea.
No, they absolutely do need to be timed and in a perfect world, I'd also like to have them look at the, at the speed limit along, along Ann Arbor Road. It, it goes from 45 to 55 and it's in, it's 55 in a very residential area. It, it hasn't changed since it was farmland. So any other questions on this?
Perhaps our new county commissioner could prepare a resolution from the county asking for assistance from the state also. We would appreciate that.
Any comments or questions on this item from the public? All righty. Then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move the Board of Trustees to approve Resolution 2019-02-12-15 urging the State of Michigan to expedite the funding and installation of all necessary four-way signals and other improvements necessary for the McLumpha Road, Ann Arbor Road traffic safety improvement.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, that was a close call. I'm going to give it to Trustee Dempsey.
I rewrote my name.
I'm here for a reason.
Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
I didn't push my button fast enough. I wouldn't make jeopardy.
It's not Jeopardy, yeah.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Supervisor Heitman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Next is item G, Supervisor and Trustee comments. Let's start with Jack.
Nothing.
Okay. Mark?
I'm all set.
I've got a couple things. Obviously, our next meeting is February 26th and we'll have a lot of stuff on that agenda. We did get some interesting news tonight relating to the Bobby Showstack Salem Springs project. Apparently Governor Whitmer is challenging the $10 million expenditure that was authorized by the legislature in Lame Duck. There is a story out tonight in Bridge Magazine, which has been covering this very extensively along with our own Don Howard here from the Plymouth Eagle. This is just a very interesting development and we will continue to monitor it. And apparently my, I have a source who was watching the State of the State address tonight and apparently the governor made some reference to sweetheart deals and money being transferred to big donors and she was going to get to the bottom of it. So if, if that's what she's referencing, then this is certainly going to be a much more active heightened issue that we can follow and track in the, in the weeks ahead. So very interesting development there. Okay, Jerry?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the nice lively debate on the, on the fire apparatus. It's very important. Also, I would like to thank our treasurer for implementing a, a program with, with our banks that really saved us from being scammed out of several thousand dollars. I'd like for him to explain that.
We, our checking account at Flagstar, they have a program called Positive Pay and what happens is after you do a check run, you know, we'll, we'll process 100 checks, I will take that electronic file and upload it into Flagstar's system. So then every check that hits Flagstar, it bounces against and makes sure that it's a valid check. If somebody has manipulated the amount or something like that, it'll be flagged. Anyway, this, first thing this morning, I got an email and there was a check for roughly $3,500 that was just flat out forged and the system caught that. First time, I've been doing this for years, first time it actually caught something, but it's pretty interesting. And they, somehow they got my signature, they got Sandy's signature, they made this beautiful replica of this check and to the naked eye, it, you know, we would have processed it, but, but technology is wonderful and it caught it.
It was that greeting card I had you sign.
Gary Heitman?
Thank you again for everybody coming with your, your comments. I look forward to, if I am not here, I am asking for no votes for anything right now. So this is.
Any topic at all?
I don't care. I mean, they're all important, right? So, I mean, that's, I didn't realize that we had that, that opportunity and, you know, I've made it clear that I make every DAGA meeting and, you know, passed up a lot of stuff just because votes are important. And now I know that votes can be pushed off, I don't have to worry about it. Thank you.
That is not my policy, by the way, so.
Yeah.
Bob? All set? Okay. All right. So it is now, yeah, I got it. Item H, public comments and questions, limited to three minutes. This is open forum. If you have a question or comment on anything at Township Business of any sort, going once. Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn. Motion's made by Trustee Dempsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.